We needed to have in there, it's all in the audit. Printed copy that we have that's available to everybody. You know, including all those kinds of things. This to me doesn't, doesn't seem to be necessary and the to have in our minutes for those kinds of things.
Yeah, I just put that in there because we had that presented through that PowerPoint. So I didn't know if that should be included in there, um, just for the minute review, because that's basically what the auditor went over.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand, Josh, and it's fine. I, I'm not, I don't want to make a big issue out of it or anything. It's just that. You know, sometimes we get packets that are two, this one doesn't happen to be that, but you know, two, three hundred pages. And when we include all these kinds of things in there, that's, you know, one of the reasons we get such voluminous packets that, you know.
Reading material?
A lot, a lot of late night reading material, that's for sure. Yeah, absolutely. So just a, just a personal comment on that. I think the same thing later on at the packet, there's a lot of information regarding one of the resolutions here that I don't think was. Really necessary to be in there, but it's, it's there anyway, so. That was all I had.
Okay, all right, then going on to payment of bills.
Hold on, I got the, on, on, on my, that's all right. On my motion to the provide a narrative. Um, I'm pretty sure that I had a, uh, something in there to the effect of not necessarily just the narrative, but. Also provide things that, you know, ideas on how that specific line item can be rectified. Am I wrong here? Was that not part of the motion?
Um, I know you discussed it. I don't remember to be honest.
No, that's correct. That was correct.
Other than that, looks, looks good to me.
What was that you had in there, Jeremy?
It was, uh, on nine of ten, or on page nine of ten of the, of that, of those meeting minutes, page twenty-one of the packet. Where Mr. Worcester Bar supported a motion by Mr. Spencer to approve having a narrative created. And also to provide information on each of those fifty-one items that, you know. Your ideas on what we should do to rectify it so that it stops happening. How that can be resolved. I mean, they, most of them might even be the same that they made. I don't know. There was, I wanted something there so that we could. Have some ideas to kick around at the board level instead of just, you know, here's the explanation. Well, I'd like to hear what, what, you know, what, what everybody thinks that. Future, they can, this, uh, internal deficiency will go away.
Sorry, you were breaking up. I mean, I heard what you said, but I don't know. My connection was really bad there. I don't know about anybody else's, but I mean, I got what you said, but. Oh, it just popped up and said my internet is unstable, which I'm in the township office, so I don't know what's going on, telling you.
Me either, and I'm hardwired.
Yeah, so am I, so. Okay, so it might have just been us, Jeremy. I heard what you said. I just meant it was kind of gnarly.
Do you mean repeat anything or good to go?
No, good to go. Yeah.
Excellent.
We'll correct that and get it in there for Monday. I guess is the thought then of the board to remove the whole presentation that it's not needed from the audit standpoint, or keep it in there?
Is that, is that the only place that the presentation exists? As I was thinking about that after she provided that PowerPoint, I didn't know where for, if that was something we could go back and get without rewatching the meeting.
Well, it was emailed, um, to me, so I could definitely just forward that out to everybody. It was emailed from the auditor. I think I just actually deleted it off my desktop, but she emailed it to us.
It was, I got it via email, so I think it was sent to everybody.
Maybe I did get it and I just didn't, and I just didn't recor, I just didn't recognize it. So, yeah, if we all have it in our email, I'd, I'd agree with Mr. Palmer. I don't think all that. It needs, needs to necessarily be in the minutes. But that's so.
Yeah, all the, all the, all the information from the audits available on our website, the whole book that has. Audit itself. I thought probably the, maybe the, the first two pages of, of her, uh, presentation. And then pages nine through eleven where we have motions that were made afterward would, would need to be included in there, but.
Right, but not necessarily all the pie charts and stuff.
Right, right.
But pie charts are pretty.
Yeah, I guess for, for me, it was just nice summary if one of our citizens wanted to look at these minutes versus reading the entire audit report.
I would say, yeah, that would be a nice for them to look at. They can always ask for it.
Okay, so overall, I mean, obviously I'm not asking anybody to make a, I mean, I'm hearing it's kind of a split in regard to take an hour in, so.
I don't care.
Well, I mean, it's in there now, so I, I, I mean, we don't need to change it. I'm just saying for future reference.
Okay, we'll just leave it then. It makes a couple other changes, okay? Okay, so moving on to the, um, I'm sorry, I asked that before and nobody, is everybody done with the meeting minutes then? Okay, um, moving on then to payment of bills. Um, we have two runs. We have the May eighteenth check run. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, just a, a couple of questions here. The, uh, on the first page of that. We always have these refunds for Warrior Pavilion where we give back the refund deposit. Uh, there's one on here for a person that just has her name listed in both places. It's three hundred and fifty, and then, uh, farther down on the page, uh, it has her name listed again for the two fifty. I'm. I'm guessing she canceled the event or something and just got all the money back.
Yes, yep, yes.
I just, it, I, I just, I prefer to see some consistency in the way things are, are logged in here, but you know. You put refund deposit for the three, but then not for the fourth. I, I, you know, I quite understand that, but. That's, um, that's, it's a minor, minor issue.
I, for. It shows up down further because it's, the rent goes into one light item and the deposit goes into another.
I think he's just talking about the narrative, Jamie. On the, on the narrative for the Clark Healy and Go, Golem, or however you say that. It says refund deposit and it says the names, um, you know, um, and then on the Walker one, it doesn't say refund deposit. But I think he's just talking about the narrative itself for.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it's not a big deal, just for consistency, it, it, you know, three of them are refunds and then one is listed differently. You have to wonder what, what that was for, you know, it's just not, not a big deal. Also, let's see. Where is it here? Oh, page twenty-seven of the packet. It's, uh, under, uh, Department two ninety-nine, unallocated. We have three payments to IT right. And each one says February through April, so I'm, I'm assuming there's three. So ones for February, ones for March, and ones for April. They're all the same amount. I guess my, my question is why are, why are we so late in, in paying those?
Um, I'd have to see who entered them. Uh, we don't enter them. We just pay them once we get them. I'd have to, let me let, people can find it right here.
I'm sorry, what? That was an unallocated, you said, Bill? Oh, one oh one two nine, no, not that one.
Yeah, one oh one two ninety-nine unallocated. It's on page, uh, uh, twenty-seven of the packet.
Yeah, I print them out, so that's not, not to say that you're not helpful, but that's not helpful for my searching. That's in the run of, um, the five eighteen run?
Uh, no, I think that's the second.
And that's the one that's for tomorrow. Okay, so.
Okay, now I see it. I was on the other.
I mean, I know in a previous board meeting some time ago, we agreed to, you know, continues with IT right. They agreed to. Provide services to us on a month-to-month basis. I was curious why we hadn't paid him for three months.
Do they invoice quarterly or something?
No. But, um. It doesn't show me who posted it. Hang on, I'll have to open up my P O system just a second.
Any other questions besides that one then? Why Jamie's looking that up?
Uh, that were all the, that was all the questions I had on the payment of bills.
What's the, uh, the leaf and brush thing? Is that some kind of advertisement in the I S code press there?
Yes.
For Leafs and Brush?
Yeah.
That we collect.
Yeah.
We're a bunch of leaves and brushes.
Okay, okay.
For the drop-off, Jeremy.
Oh, the drop-off. Of course it is, okay, all right.
Good one, though.
That was a good one.
Sorry. Not enough coffee.
It's just had too many hours to wear off.
That's right.
Let's see here.
Return of bogus late fee on last statement. Awesome.
If you look, uh, Miss, I talked with Miss McGuire several weeks ago about the, the visa bills and, and she put those, uh. Sent those out to everybody. I, I thought it'd be a good idea for, you know, for us to look at those. And I, there was an item on there where they had charged a late fee and then were giving it back to us and. Think Al put on there, this is bogus or something and.
And it made it in, made it into the, uh, the, the invoice description.
And then, and then he made it official when he put it in here as a bogus, uh. The, yeah.
Fantastic.
That could be troublesome, depending on what somebody puts in, right?
Uh, I suppose it could be. If they're, you know, if you can type whatever you want in there, I suppose somebody could get, uh.
They were entered into the P O system on May eighteenth by Tammy, so I don't know. That would be not a question for me. And then it was approved on the nineteenth, and then we wrote the check right away.
It's got three different invoice numbers.
Right, because there's three, there's actually three different invoice numbers for that, and then there's another one for seven hundred and fifty dollars for Old Orchard Park that was posted also at the same. So they were entered on the eighteenth to, and so we could get it on this check run, so they'd be, be able to be written for tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to why that, that was entered so late.
And maybe the description's not correct.
Um, on the invoices, it shows. Um, invoice date ranging. Two twenty-one or two, February to March, I'm sorry, to April.
Well, technically then, if it's February to April, then paying it and you would get it in April, so paying it in May is, it's a net thirty, right?
Right, well, we've got, well, and it's go from year, it's like, this is for, this one, the one is dated. Invoice date ranges February first, twenty-one to four thirty, twenty-one, and that looks like it's IT service contract monthly.
All right, so we can just.
April, and then the other one says. Uh, January first to March thirty-first, and that's dated March first. And the other one says July first of twenty to twenty, or to two twenty-eight, twenty-one for service contract. So, and that one's dated February.
All right, well, let's take a look at the invoices themselves, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know. Tammy might know the answer to that right away.
Do the invoices get attached directly to that, uh, to that line item in the, in the software, just out of curiosity?
No, what happens is in the P O system, the department heads now have to scan them. And then they scan the actual invoice to the P O system and then on the date, and then they have to put in the. G L code that they want it coded to. That's why, um, when we, when it gets to us and goes through the department heads. That's why it needs to be initial and coded on the original one, then you turn it in so that when we're looking at it in the system, we can make sure that. They didn't hit a typo and hit wrong, wrong department or those type of things. We can look at the individual one before it gets filed.
Right.
Yep.
So, so they did, so it was scanned in somewhere into the P O system, but the P O system's separate from the bookkeeping software?
What happens is once the P O is created and it goes through all the three departments, it goes through, uh, the superintendent's office. Then the clerk's office, and then to the treasurer's office for approval, and when approved, and they turn them, they have to turn their original invoices into the basket. Um, then Jane will take that when she's creating her lists, kind of a checks and balance thing, takes those. And goes down and she creates the invoice that you're looking at on the list here to get paid.
So you, you're still working with, with paper invoices even though they're loaded into the system?
What, yep, they get loaded into the system and they're attached, but, uh, by law, there's a. I don't know what statute off the top of my head, but it says that the original bills need to be kept and filed. Audit purposes.
Okay.
And that would make sense, right? I mean, you have to be able to justify the number, so.
Right.
See somewhere to have to keep it.
Right, I guess, I guess I still don't understand where, where you're saying that, yes, it's scanned in, but no, you can't see it.
Oh, I can see it. It was entered, it was entered into the P O side by Tammy and on the eighteenth. Bill was asking why it was entered so late.
I just wondering, I was just wondering if you can see the actual invoice that was, that's attached to the P O system for these three. And new in- invoices that were created in the B S and A software. You can look at the original invoice, maybe it is a quarterly invoice or something to that effect.
Those were the dates that I gave you. I actually have the original invoices in my hand and the other ones are scanned into the P O system.
Okay.
Sorry, maybe.
No, it's fine.
All right, any other questions on those?
Did I miss another question while I was looking?
No, there wasn't anything else.
Okay.
We were making jokes about something Al entered in, I think that was what the talk was.
Oh, okay. Just my mind talking to the lady from that. That was crazy.
Did you actually have to call them up and tell them, uh, could you, could, could you please refund this, this bogus fee?
I, it was crazy. I was like, listen, you've got to be kidding me. So you're going to actually credit me twice, and then. I go, why can't you just take it off there in the first place? We have all the other receipts that were paid on the same day. But then you changed us, charged us a late fee for the same one, because I actually take them to the bank and pay them.
Right.
You're paid. It's not like I'm mailing them in and one got there late or anything. I'm handing them to them and they hand them right back to me. And they still charged us a late fee on them. It's twice now.
Good times.
Oh, it was great, let me tell you.
Okay, all right, so the next on is obviously Subcommittee Reports, Mr. Rowe will be on. So, um, now we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Um, we have the drop-off. Refuse, 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 garbage. There you go.
I, I, I think, uh, and if, if we could make a change there.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell has the Ferguson Water Meter Pit Purchase in his, uh, narrative. But yet we've got that under the other, uh. So if we could move, move that up to number seven on the superintendent's report, would make things a little clearer here for. Following through.
Meter pit purchase request?
Yes.
So we'll amend the agenda to do that?
Yeah, just move that, move that from number thirteen, other up to number seven under superintendent's report.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Okay, um, well anyways, the garbage contract for a drop-off.
So wait, listen, if you had downloaded this packet early, like yesterday. You're probably not going to have that contract in what you're looking at, so make sure you download. A current right off the website, because it does have that contract in it. Okay, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. So if you're like, hey, I don't see it, it is in there.
Is that an amended agenda?
It, from what went out Thursday, yes, because I caught it.
But it's not called amended on the website, so you'd have to know when you downloaded it, or look in your agenda to see if it's there.
Are you saying you added the contract to the meeting packet, or you changed the agenda?
No, I, I added the contract to the meeting agenda, because I, because I found it was not in the packet.
It was already, it was already on the agenda, but it wasn't.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's in the packet now, um, Tammy uploaded it.
I see it, yep.
Yeah, so it is in there now. So if you printed it before, um, it's always been on the agenda, just the.
Yeah.
The supplemental information was not in the packet, so it is in there now, um, and, yeah.
Yes.
And as of this afternoon, I believe.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And, um, okay. And then the Great Lakes Fireworks Agreement, that was, that information was just sent to us this afternoon, so we had, we uploaded that as well. Into the packet.
Okay, so there's some additional information there, okay, but, but it's always been on the agenda.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, those, those were two of my questions.
Okay, well, we got them answered, I hope, so. Then the VA Clinic, uh, that contract. Unless there's questions there, we can, we can talk about that on Monday. And then the two M O U's, those are pretty straightforward if you read through them.
Is there any questions or does anybody need any additional information for Monday to make a determination? Okay.
Okay, it's, uh, six on the Bissinette Road Property Demolition. And obviously now number seven, the Ferguson Water Pit Purchase, as we moved it up on the agenda.
Can, can we back up just one quick second here? I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I was just, uh, going back and, and getting the updated, uh, agenda here. And, yeah, for the fireworks contract.
Mm-hmm.
Mitch, in your, in your narrative, you said it's increased to twelve thousand to reflect rising costs.
If you. Yep, there should be a change in that as well. If, I'm not sure if, uh, the, uh, that got updated into the packet as well, but it should. If it didn't, I will. Um, he's gonna hold. To the ten-five, but I, I will tell you, I, I think what we ought to do, and then let, let me talk about this real brief. We are like the lowest of the lowest for them, um, as far as shows. And basically I was told if you don't get up to about fifteen thousand next year. We're going to drop you, because we can get other shows in the twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollar range, much more profitable for them. And they've been holding and holding for us. Uh, we've had this cost of the show since two thousand seventeen with no increases in cost. And, uh, what I would do is, you know, you could pass it at the ten thousand five hundred dollar level, but I'd, I'd suggest we maybe want to look at. Maybe and say fifteen hundred dollars to increase the number of shells and show the vendor that we wish to keep working with them. The, the issue is, again, they, we are the show that is the lowest total dollar. And so they're making the least amount of money on the show for the Fourth of July, and there's, in these discussions with them. They've got others that will offer a much more money to take over for the Fourth, and so we'll move or get bumped.
Well, yeah, I, I, I totally understand that. We, we've had this company for quite a few years, and they've always done a. Phenomenal job for us. But it, they're the ones that present the contract to us.
That's correct.
With what the cost, what the cost is going to be, so I don't, I guess I don't quite understand why we would. Volunteer to pay a higher amount than what they're asking for.
Would this would do a few extra, I'm saying if you want, I, I'd add a few extra dollars to it, get a few extra shells. Kind of show them, look, yes, we're, we're, we're serious. We, we are, we appreciate you doing this for us. It's still this ten thousand five hundred dollar rate. And we want to still work with you in the future. And again, you don't have to do it. You could just leave it at the ten thousand five hundred, but I'm saying that next, definitely next year. The budget's going to have to be pushed up to fifteen thousand plus for them to stay interested in us.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. I, that's, you know, that's something we certainly need to take up with the budget. Uh, if, if the idea was, and, and I'm certainly open to this idea, that since we didn't have fireworks last year. If we wanted to increase the amount in this contract and, and increase it to, you know, twelve-five or whatever. Uh, for some additional, uh, shells and fireworks, I, that, that's fine by me.
I thought we did have them last year.
We had fireworks last year.
I mean, I didn't go. I was.
I did, but they were really good.
We had them.
Oh, that's right, we did. That's right, I'm sorry. Yep, yep.
We just didn't open the bathrooms, remember?
Yeah.
I heard about that anyways.
That's what it was, yep, yep. Uh, but anyway, like, like I said, this company's always done a good job for us and, uh. Uh, I, I would like to continue working with them, and if, you know, the costs are up, we generally, they present us with a contract and, and. We approve it, so, um, if, if the idea is to, you know, you know, maybe step it up a notch this year and a little bigger, uh. Uh, display, then, uh, I, I'm fine with that.
Doesn't the community kick in a portion of that as well? I seem to remember all those, uh, community, uh.
They did a couple of years ago.
Right, they did when, um, there was a, and I hate to use the word threat, but there was a concern. That the show might, you know, be in jeopardy because of funding. They did a big community surge, um, for donations. And the, um, Chamber of Commerce held those funds, um, for all the, you know, the collectors, so.
And they stopped doing that, huh?
Well, and I'll take it, they, they, Great Lakes and fireworks were kind of hesitant to even give us the, they were kind of pushing us to the fifth. For a while, and we real, I mean, we had to lobby hard to stay on the Fourth. And it's because we're a, a really in a low dollar show for them, and. So, and in asking, I, I called some other Michigan fireworks, uh. Launch show people, and they were like, we wouldn't even do your show for that amount. We wouldn't even touch it, not on the Fourth. So, uh, again, I think, you know, we, we need to step up our game a bit, and if we need to go to. Osable Township or the Chamber or whoever else and start asking, hey, look, uh, if you want, you want good quality shows. We're going to have to pay for them. Uh, obviously those. While they may be getting at wholesale, they're still, they're, I'm sure they've had an increase in cost since two thousand seventeen. And they've been holding this, uh, price since then, so this is, this be year four.
But we are, with this, with this contract, we are set for them.
We would lock, yeah, yeah, but we, we need to get, give them an answer though, so.
Right.
Because they've got other people that will take our spot.
Right, and we've paid.
When did we, when did we receive the contract? Don't we usually do this in February, March?
Well, we started talking to them along, you know, about March, and there was still some discussion about. Uh, whether they were even interested in this, and again, well, it was the day.
When, when.
It was the day, and, and they're like, well, we'd like to do it on the Fifth. And so I, I mean, we've been, I've been lobbying to get it back, you know, on the Fourth. To try to retain them, and even Ann called them too, and said, look, we really want to, we want you to stay with us for the Fourth, and. Uh, so they've sent us this contract, you know, once we've convinced them to stay with us and not ditch us for somebody else.
Well, are you still, uh, amenable, Mr. Palmer, to, uh, increasing the contract a little bit to keep them. Interested in doing this on the Fourth, because I mean, other, I mean, it, it sounds to me like, you know, there's, it's, it's a one-day show. It's got to be a lot of competition for that, and there's not, you know, probably not that many pyro technicians out there. So I guess we can either raise our rates and conform to their requests, or we can take the chance and try to do it next year. Or we can just take the risk that we're not going to have fireworks on the Fourth.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with increasing the, I mean, increasing the amount if we increase the, you know, the amount of the display. That, I, I'm fine with that.
And that's, yeah, the, the increase in cost, what I'm suggesting would be the increase in shells.
Oh, yeah, and I'm sure that they make a percentage. Oh, yeah, and I'm sure that they make a percentage off each of those shells, and that's fine, but they want us, they want us to order more stuff, they want a bigger show, because there's probably other cities that are like, hey, well, we want a bigger show, and they make more money off that, obviously, so. We get a bigger show, or we get pushed.
I mean, he's the, Bruce Tyrell is the manager, quote unquote, and then he has crews that he sends around to do this, so obviously, a crew working on the fourth would probably rather get paid off a thirty thousand dollar show than a ten thousand dollar show, I mean, it only stands to reason, I guess.
Oh, yeah, and I'm sure that the, I'm sure that the citizens and everybody that comes up for the Fourth of July fireworks on, on our wonderful beaches. They, they think they'd appreciate just a couple more shells.
Right, so I guess the first, your question, though, Bill, was the narrative that, that Mitch had talked about twelve, twelve five or twelve thousand, but the contract itself that's in the updated packet has got ten five, so basically, right.
Being updated, yep, I updated my, my report to reflect this ten five. And that I talk about adding fifteen hundred dollars to that.
Right.
To increase the number of shells and show the vendor that we want to keep working with them.
Okay, that's fine, that's, that's great.
Do we want to do something where we, you know, set some kind of percentage increase for, you know, cost of living or whatever type of deal, where we can say, okay, well, you know, if you continue to contract with us, we'll raise it, you know, two percent every year. That way you can give us a couple extra shells, or if the cost goes up, or something, something that had effect, or would you guys rather just leave it as, let's raise it fifteen hundred this year, and we'll see what they say?
And I asked him, I said, what, what will be, you know, next, I, again, the fifteen thousand plus came from them as far as retaining. But I, I think, again, I think it'd be a show of goodwill that, hey, look, we, we do appreciate you sticking with us and sticking with us for the fourth. And not bumping us off to somebody else that can pay you more.
A saddle about increasing in their, in them.
Yeah.
Getting more money.
Well, them and possibly the CVV, I think would be a, you know. Which is the hotels and everybody.
I think you tell them.
Yeah. Because they haven't kicked in on the pack, I mean, I think they might have, when we did the, when the community did the fundraiser. But it would be, I mean, if we want a larger show, or we want to remain with our fireworks on the Fourth of July, that no matter when it, that's been our tradition. Is that no matter what day that the fourth falls on, that's always our, our fireworks, that's always our, yeah. So, and if that's what we want to stick with, then.
Although a future thought might be to do them on the third. It is a, it is a very popular thing to do it on the third of July. And then the Fourth of July, people can do all their other things and stuff. But people don't necessarily have to go home or go back to work the following day, so they stay up later and I'll call it, enjoy it more.
Do we get a discount for that?
Uh, some places do, yes, because it's on a, on the non-fourth. Yep, there is, there is somewhat of a discount as far as number of shells you might be able to get if you did it on the like I said, something to do on the second, or they do it the weekend before, and the cost, that same costing type of show is, is, is less typically.
Or we could keep the same dollar amount and just have a bigger show if we did it on an off day.
You could, but like you say, a lot of places have done it on the third, because it gives people who work the next day the ability to, to not have to worry about that.
Great.
So, okay.
Well, I think that would be something we definitely would have to put out to the, to the community and, and so on, to get some feedback, because Everybody's kind of playing their calendars by.
Two thousand twenty-two.
Yep, for twenty twenty-one, we're good on the fourth, though. Okay, so.
The VA clinic janitorial contract, any questions there?
No, let's go back to this, and I'm a little confused here.
Sure.
Mitch, the assignment from February, when this goes back, was you were going to go back and expand the scope of work and develop an RFP. I haven't seen an RFP to go out for competitive quotes for an exact scope of work for these types of projects. So I'm kind of confused. I mean, I know this is an issue in the community, we need to clean these things up, but this goes back to February. So what's going on?
Part of this is, I want to get something in writing with them so we can work on something in the future.
But where's the competitive quoting with a scope of work in an RFP?
My comment about that is, I, I'm not sure there's people around here that can do this work with the VA's qualifications if they want.
I think he's.
I'm not talking about the VA.
Okay.
We switched subjects.
We already went over that.
Boden, the demolition.
Oh, sure. I'm gonna say I disagree. And the, and the fact, and I'll tell you why, because each one of a demolition is gonna be different. Each time is gonna be a different thing.
So we're gonna have a standard set of requirements that goes out for competitive bid, I don't understand what's different about that. We define the process, we send it out for competitive bid, it's that simple. That's what was the, that was the assignment in February.
Okay, competitive bid?
There's many contractors in town that can do this type of work, and I know a couple of them responded. We stopped the process because we didn't exactly define the scope of how the property had to be cleaned up. That was the assignment. We're gonna go back and define the process and send it back out for RFP, for a competitive quote.
Is this the same one?
Just go, let's just move on.
What were you saying, Jamie?
Um, is this the same one that I thought that we had Bowden's on before, but there was a question about the insurance? Or was that a different property?
Right, well, we, we.
There was a question about the insurance and scope of work.
Right, we had, I believe that Mark had gotten two price quotes. One from Travis and one from Bowden's.
Right.
And the proposal from Bowden's was less, and we were looking at moving forward with that one.
But there was a question about the insurance.
Insurance and, I think, where they were hauling to and everything else, and then I, I know there was discussion about the, this, I remember Steve, I guess, saying something in regard to the scope of work, but I, I thought we were just I, I don't recall, I guess, redoing a whole RFP and going out, I thought we were fine.
I didn't either, but we were giving up on Bowden and going with Travis, I thought that was the deal, but.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I don't recall.
We can all go back and reread the minutes, and also go back and listen to the meeting. But that was going, that was the assignment, and actually, Mitch, I sent you an email on it, and I did not get a response. So let's just go past it, I, I'm not, you know, in favor of doing anything on this until I see an RFP and a scope for.
Okay.
And that's clearly within supervisor superintendent's responsibility.
Okay, right, so I guess just to stop here for a second, we, we kind of buzzed through, I just want to make sure there was no questions on Osco to VA clinic, because that's where, you know, Mitch thought we were talking at first. Is everybody all set with that? We have enough information, we're good to go Monday? I mean, when I say good to go, discussion, whatever, I'm not, I'm just saying, does anybody need any more information on that?
No, it sounds like a good company, they have experience with VA, it sounds like it'll be, it's not that much more than what we paid in the past, and probably will be a good fit there.
Okay, and then we have, we have two MOUs on the agenda, one is for the Sedum, between Sedum and Osco to Township, and the other one with Black Swamp Services. It's one of these days, Todd, I gotta find out where you came up with Black Swamp, but that's another discussion.
Whoa, lag. I heard, I heard something about, then you just cut out for about ten, fifteen seconds there. We were, we were talking about, we're still on the, the Sedum stuff, or the janitorial contract now.
The, the janitorial, nobody had any comments, or, I, I mean, Bill said, looked good. So then I moved on to the next thing, the MOI. Is there any comments or any more information that's needed for the MOI?
On the.
MOU, sorry.
On the second one, the question about, they're gonna, they're going to submit by the first of every month and paid out by the fifth of every month, I'm not sure if that's gonna be possible with the way our trucks, our check runs are. And does it, it doesn't define like if the fifth or the first is on a weekend, do we extend it past the fifth? So let's say the first is, you know, weekend, are we still gonna have to have, and they don't do it until Monday, the third, we still have to have it out by the fifth, that kind of a thing? We write checks once, we write checks every week on a Tuesday. So it's not always necessarily on the fifth of the month.
That's something where it should be written a couple days early, and then hand it to them on the fifth, or?
Well, if they don't.
Right, so you can't, yeah. Good times.
What's, what's the time limit you need if it's submitted on the first, Jamie, when, when? What's the time limit for having the payment? The soonest it could be done?
What was the question, Bill?
Well, if they submit a, if they submit a bill on the first, what's the soonest that that could be paid?
It would be the net, whatever, to the next Tuesday, so like, November first is a Monday, so that Tuesday, the second, we could write it, as long as it's, but it's gotta be entered and approved by all the departments. Now, that being said, let's say Todd gives the invoice to Tammy to enter into the P O system, she gets it entered in there Monday, but in but somebody's not here in the clerk's office to approve it, then it won't get approved. So if it's gonna approve, then it doesn't make it to me to get approved, so it gets to Jane to get written. So, I mean, we, we always try to, like, if we always go, hey, this one needs to get, you know, we need to get this on this list. We kind of all work together and make that happen, you know, as long as that's gonna always happen, then I don't see a problem with Friday, first Tuesday that we have it. But I, I just saying by the fifth of every month, I don't know if that's possible.
Todd said that the chat box doesn't work on the, for the options, which I didn't do anything different, so I don't know. But.
Can he talk?
I, I just unmute, asked him to unmute, he said he's flexible on these issues.
Okay, yeah.
It doesn't, oh, Jeremy just said it doesn't work.
I was just checking, just checking.
Yeah.
It's working on my machine, so.
I believe you.
So there's, yeah, so there's Todd anyways.
Yeah, so I, Jamie made a great point, and I wasn't really thinking about that particular point when we were kind of coming up with MOU, so. I am, I mean, I am flexible, as long as it's more like the, if we can work it out, so it's the first half of the month, and it doesn't really slide too much farther. Second week.
Absolutely.
Other, you know, pretty flexible.
We'll get it out the first Tuesday we can.
Okay, and so looking at June, July, oh, yeah, first, the first Tuesdays are under that program, we should be good.
Okay.
Okay, problem solved.
So do we need to change anything in the memo? Or we just go with that verbal?
I'd put the fifteenth of each month. No later, no later than.
No later, okay.
You guys, would the board like it if we amended that contract and provided the new one for the Monday night's meeting?
Yeah, sure, that'd be great, Todd, thanks.
All right, that's me, that's an easy fix.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we covered the demolition, meter pit, we moved, are moving up. So, just grab that, any questions on the meter pit request? Anybody need any information in addition to what's in the packet before Monday? No?
No.
Okay. All right, then we are on to resolutions, we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, notice of intent capital improvement bonds. Other lengthy ones.
Could we discuss the violation of flag code?
Um, that's not until later in the agenda.
Well, it's listed in the superintendent's report on my.
I'll put it down, can I figure, we need some info.
Right, but it's on number fourteen underneath the other, I'm going through the agenda, like, on the agenda.
Okay.
So, so next on is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, notice of intent capital improvement bonds. That was for Mr. Freel, I believe. Let's break that.
Mr. Freeman.
Freeman, there you go, I was close.
This is twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, we're talking about? Uh, in the resolution, it says, at a meeting held at Robert J. Parks Library on twenty-fifth of the day of May. I think that should be held by a, by a Zoom.
Yeah.
The ID number.
That would be correct.
And. Apparently you got corrected.
Okay, anybody else have anything on that resolution, or any additional information needed? For Monday? All right, then the next on is resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. Which is to adopt procedures for the granting and removal of real property tax exemptions. And that's from Nancy, correct?
Yes.
Okay, she is on the, she is on the line if we have any questions, she said, for any of the information she provided. Any questions on twenty twenty-one dash sixteen?
Yeah, so, so what's this gonna do here, to adopt? Re- remove, the removal of real property exemptions?
He, she had a big old narrative, but let me.
Is it underneath it?
Um, it was like in the packet of stuff, there was a whole bunch of stuff there.
Oh, yeah, here's, yeah, here's the whole bunch of, looks like some kind of survey.
Seven, three, six, seven, six, sorry, I'm just trying to find her phone number that she's on, I just hit her to, hey, Nance.
Hello, um, okay, so the purpose of this part of the AMR reviews that are coming up. The State Tax Commission wants all of the jurisdictions to have an official policy and procedures that we're going to use when the assessors make a determination that we're going to grant an exemption such as churches are exempt, or schools are exempt, so we have to have a procedure and policy for that, and have to have who wants an exemption like that to fill out an application and tell us under what statute they believe they qualify for that property tax exemption.
Gotcha.
So you have the resolution, the policy, because the resolution references the policy, the application. And then the other great big attachment that, that Mr. Palmer had alluded to earlier was basically all of the various background information as to the type of exemptions that are out there.
So that doesn't necessarily go with the resolution itself, right? The resolution is a two pager.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, I, we had all the right, I had all the attachments there, so that if there was any questions as to, okay, we're adopting this resolution, but what's the application look like, what's the policy and procedure that we're adopting, so, just so you have that information there. This has been plagiarized from my other townships, and this is pretty much a format that was suggested from the various township and assessing associations and stuff, and it's been widely utilized throughout the state.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what's hap, that's what happens when you have a super assessor, you get all the information in the world on any given topic.
My dad always told me if you can't dazzle them with brilliant spaff, let them with bull.
Right. And, and I, I, I believe in that theory, too. I've used that theory.
Okay, any more questions for, I mean, uh, so are, you're part of the, obviously, um, resolution number twenty twenty-one seventeen as well, right?
Correct.
Okay, so any questions since Nancy's very graciously, uh, logged in at five o'clock on a, or else she's been here for longer than that, but on Friday, any other questions for Nancy on, um, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen? If there's no more on sixteen?
Yeah, on seventeen, were we assessing a penalty and interest in the past?
No, we have not been, and, um, if we're not going to levy that penalty and interest, then we need to have a policy, a resolution that says we are not going to do that. I checked with, um, with Jessica in Asable, she's not doing the name, the jurisdiction she does. Um, I'm not aware of any of the jurisdictions like in Alcona County that are charging it. It's one of those things that, um, in Northern Michigan and the UP, very few jurisdictions are, are charging that penalty. It's just, uh, very cumbersome and creates a lot of work for three different departments.
So do we have that resolution to waive the, waive those fees before us as well, or?
Yep, that's the, um,
That's the
Twenty twenty-one dash seventeen.
Ah, cause it says waiver of penalty and interest?
Yeah, just subtle, subtle title.
That's very subtle.
Really complicated, Jeremy.
What's that?
It's really complicated.
I'm telling you.
Figure it out.
This whole reading thing, man, woo!
So any other questions for Nancy on those two? No? All right.
Hard work, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you very much, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, have a great weekend.
Thanks.
All right, bye. Bye, hang out if you want, but you don't have to, obviously.
All right, thank you, you have a night, you guys all have a nice weekend.
Thanks, bye.
Thanks.
Okay, so next on, we, we're moving to other on agenda, on the agenda, um, we have um, Lake Street Property LOI. I don't know if Todd, I mean, Todd or Mitch, I don't know if you have any additional information or narrative to provide right now?
Uh, well, I mean, hopefully everybody, everybody got all the documents that were presented to me. There's, uh, the, um, actual LOI, and then they go through a little background of themselves and the project and job creation, and a little bit of, a little bit more narrative than just the LOI, and then you've got some other, um, you've got a picture of what the hotel would look like, you've got a site layout there, and, um, and then an overlay of their site layout over the, the satellite image. So I think it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty straightforward in terms of, of what they're presenting and the information you have. So, happy to answer any questions. Um, I don't know if they call it out in their narrative, but they own several other hotels, uh, throughout Michigan, and they're actually the same group that did the, uh, project up in Alpena.
The Holiday Inn Express in Alpena?
Yep.
Okay, it's a nice property.
Yeah, and that was, I guess, uh, the brownfield itself predates, you know, my involvement in northeastern Michigan, but I was told that was a pretty rough site, and I think
Yes.
Been there since then, you know, since the hotel's up, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty good-looking site they have there now.
Yeah, it was, I, I know it was a brownfield site, that was clever. Do you by any chance know how many acres the, um, what that one in Alpena sits on? I was just trying to get a, you know?
I, I don't, I could find out.
Okay.
When are they talking about breaking ground on this sucker if, if everything goes forward?
Yeah, so in their narrative, they
Talked about the summer.
Yeah, it looked like a July, a July groundbreaking, if, you know, we get, we get through the contingencies, and it's not, it's not heavily weighted with contingencies, and they wanna fast track those, so they've got, their contingency period is only forty-five days, and they proposed closing, uh, thirty days after that, and they're breaking ground. They own their own, they have their own construction entity as well, so they can control their own destiny on the construction side of it, and not beholden to a third party that they would contract with. And so typically, they, they get these built in ten to twelve months.
So Todd, is this, uh, date that's in their, uh, letter, uh, shall remain in force until five twenty-six? Is that a, is that hard and fast? So, in other words, we need to make a, we'll need to make a decision on Monday night?
Well, I mean, I can't, if that's what it says, that's what it says. I can't speak on their behalf or arbitrarily change
Right.
date, uh, you guys do what you want, and if you decide that you can't make a decision, we'll go back and, you know?
Our decision, yeah, and our decision could also be a request for an extension for additional time. You know, it's just, I think they're wanting a response. Well, it says agreed, agreed and accepted, but, um, anyways.
I, I think it's, it's an exciting project, uh, uh, I think would make a huge, uh, a huge impact on our downtown area. They could, this would be a year-round facility, putting a pool in there and, um, I don't know, it's kind of exciting for me, anyway, I think.
I agree, I'm there with you.
Todd, will anybody from, from the, Todd, will anybody from their side be on to answer any questions?
Uh, yes, I believe they will be. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's exciting for sure. Um, did we, uh, and I know you, well, obviously, Bill, I know you know the zoning inside and out, um, is four stories allowed in that area, I guess?
Yes, yes, that's, it, it's actually zoned, uh, under the new, uh, Form Based Code for, uh, lodging.
Right, I knew that, but I wasn't sure on how many stories.
Yeah, three to four stories.
Okay. All right, any other information anybody wants to see brought? Um, I think it would be definitely helpful to have them on the line if we had questions, but.
I, I was, I was just curious, it doesn't relate to this, I'm sorry to bring it up, but, um, we had talked about the Skiel property, um, and I didn't see that on the agenda. I was just wondering if, I know there were some questions that were gonna be checked into. Do we have, Todd, do we have any information on that to move forward to that proposal?
Yeah, yeah, they, they sent back a response to our questions. They weren't able to, you know, answer all of them specifically, and we had some pretty specific questions because a lot of that will depend on, um, their market studies that, that they'll perform. Um, and I, honestly, I don't get to see the agendas before they go out, so I kind of assumed it was on the agenda, but, um, if you guys wanna do an agenda add, there isn't, there is information available.
Well, cause didn't that have, actually, Bill, I was gonna kinda, and I meant to ask if you send Todd a message. I thought it had like a July fifth response by, didn't it? Not July, June, fifth?
That's, that sounds about right.
So we kind of, I mean, we don't, if we don't respond Monday, then it's gonna expire, I guess, unless we get an extension, so.
Yeah, I mean, we ha, I have what, you know, I presented all the questions that I had, or, you know, that I was given, I presented to them, they did provide a response, so uh, we are in a position to have it on the agenda. If you guys wanna add it, and then we'll, you know, provide the responses to you, and I know they, at least, uh, one of them will be available on Monday for, you know, to answer any questions as well. I talked to him today.
I think if, if you can, if you can get the information out to all the board members, just, uh, an email with their responses and the information, then I would like to add this to the agenda on Monday because, uh, um, I think we need to take some action on it one way or the other.
Sure. Yeah, well, otherwise it's gonna, I mean, number one, it's gonna expire, so.
Right.
Yep. Okay, so Skiel, I'll put that on the notes, and we, you know, when we go over the follow-up and whatever, we can discuss it, but this is still Avenue. All right. Okay, good, good information, Todd, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, so
Looks exciting.
Yeah, um, so next on other, other, we have the Freedman Listing Agreement.
Yeah, I can, I can go ahead, I mean, I can give you guys a little background and commentary on that as well, cause I think that'll help you, you know, whichever direction you'd like to go. Um, but I feel like we're, we're in a bit of a, um, pickle's not the right word, but you know, the value of that building going out to auction is the value of the revenue it now generates with the VA lease, and then even, even the month to months, and then when, um, when the, um, medical center ultimately moves out, um, but while those lease agreements and those revenues are in place, I mean, that by and large is the, the value of that building going to auction. So kind of like every, every week that we're, you know, it's, we're not doing anything with it, uh, somewhat devalues the building. Now, I did ask Ann and Mitch if we could just hold off for a couple of weeks, there are two, there are two buyers interested in the building. One buyer, but one buyer only wants the VA and maybe an extra three thousand square feet, and the other buyer wants the rest of it. The problem is, is, you know, there's, there's kind of an entanglement of the utilities and the things that are coming to that building, how do you separate that out? How do you condo that building so you could have two owners? And neither one of them are really excited about, you know, buying the whole thing and then leasing the other part out, or the, you know, or being a tenant to the other, they both wanna own. And so, I'm not sure how fast we're really gonna get decisions on those two parties, uh, and I feel like, you know, we had this, Oni was part of the, um, well, we went out for RFP to hire a third-party broker, and it was part of that package. Uh, Freedman's, you know, been somewhat patient for us, with us being able to, you know, do, do our own due diligence and, and walk down the path that we need to walk to, but I feel like if we don't, if we don't push the potential buyers and at the same time prepare for auction, um, and run those in parallel tracks, you know, I feel like we might be left either, we're not gonna be able to do anything with it short-term, or, you know, I can't promise you what these two buyers might even present as offers, like, maybe they think that they're gonna get it for, you know, a steal because of whatever reason. Um, so I just think it's in our best interest to let Freedman run with it, they can run with the two buyers and try to circumvent that as fast as we can, or at least get some feel of what their offer might be, or how soon they would make an offer. And we'll have a lot more intelligence versus getting, and we could also then be getting it ready for auction, and if we decide these two buyers are not gonna come together, we're ready to pull the trigger, take it to auction and see if we can't net, uh, kind of what we'd all been kind of toying around with and setting that floor around the nine hundred thousand mark. But, that's why I bring it back to you, you know, it's completely, you know, up to you guys to decide how you'd like to move forward.
Well, I think that's a good idea to list it, um, since we do have that, just question that says on air, price to be determined, how will we, how will we determine that price? I mean, if we're gonna list it, there has to be a price put on it. Right?
Well, we can, I mean, you can, we can pick a number, but, you know, we think, if we think we're gonna fetch nine hundred thousand at auction, or at least that, or if that's what our floor would be at auction, then that's probably a fair listing price. Uh, not everything that ever gets listed does have a listing price, a lot of it is sort of, you know, to be negotiated, or, you know, I do see commercial properties that are, you know, in qua, inquire within, basically. Um, so I feel like that's, that could be still an option for us.
Okay, I know, uh, commercial property oftentimes is different, uh, than, you know, residential in terms of prices and whatnot. Uh, maybe, maybe we could just put a, 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 uh, minimum price in the agreement.
We can do that.
I don't know, I don't know if that accomplishes anything, but, you know?
Well, if you feel like you have to have a price on it going to market, uh, you know, just because, just because we say, you know, minimum price or an asking price is not, and I'm just gonna use the nine hundred, and, and was on that tour, and it's kind of the number that we were kind of bouncing around as maybe what we would set the auction floor at. Um, you know, doesn't mean ultimately an offer comes in at seven fifty, we don't decide to take it because it's the right buyer, you know, you're not setting it up as a listing it for sale is not setting it up for a, a minimum auction offer or a minimum bid offer, you're, that's what your go-to-market price is.
Sure, sure.
So, that's probably a good one for you guys to chew on over the weekend and be prepared to really, you know, deliberate on Monday and see if we can't come to some sort of a decision.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, I mean, I, I know you would, you know, kind of wanted to hold a little bit, cause you're talking to a couple people.
Yep.
But I, um, I think we need to move forward with the listing and the auction concept. Um, and if those people come to fruition, they do, and if they don't, you know, we're moving forward in the right direction.
Well, we're certainly putting them on the clock.
Yeah.
You really wanna do this, then we gotta be doing this.
Right, and who knows if they're gonna come up with a dollar amount that is, you know, something that we would wanna transfer anyways, um, you know, especially because we're giving them pretty strong, I thought we were giving a pretty strong, um, positive feedback from Freedman on, you know, um, results of an auction, so.
Yeah, and that, I, I, like you said earlier, when I started this, the, the value of that building at auction is really based on the
Right.
meaning the shorter that, the shorter that
Guarantee is, yep.
The, the devalues the building, so
Right.
Feel like we can't really be wasting any, I mean, I'm the one who asked for, hey, give me a few weeks to see what kind of happens here, but I'm not, you know, I know the, I know the one party is definitely interested, but it's, it's kind of a sticky mesh trying to divide that building in two.
Yes.
And neither party's really giving me a sense of, hey, this is kind of what we think our number would be. I'm not gonna hold on to this thing for a couple of months, lose all the value, and then, you know, both parties together, I think it's worth two fifty.
Right, right, for sure.
Help us.
Okay.
So, my commentary.
Thank you. Anybody else have any, anything more that we need then for Monday? All right, moving on, um, to number three, possible social media policy violation.
I think that is it for me, so I'm gonna check out, and wish all of you a great weekend.
Thanks, you too, Todd.
You too, Todd, thanks a lot.
Thanks for adding those back on the agenda. I'm just gonna simply ask, as we set up the, uh, policy committee now that three and four get sent to that policy committee for review and report back to the board as number four is tied with, uh, workplace harassment.
Okay, so you want those actually removed from the agenda and that they're just in with the, um?
No, they're on the agenda. I'm just gonna basically ask if they get sent to the policy committee for review and then a report back to the board.
Okay, any other questions on that?
That includes a social media policy violation as well?
Yeah, three and four.
Two, three and four, possible social media policy violation and micromanagement issue.
Yep.
Okay, next one is recommendation for hiring a CPA. There's nothing, there's, there's no backup on all three of those, so. But is the recommendation for hiring a CPA, where's that coming from?
I think that was something that Mr. Sutton wanted, where he wanted to, uh, bring in a CPA to kind of oversee the books a little bit and, in conjunction with the financial advisor type situation.
Does that still need to be on the agenda then, or are we, cause there's nothing, again, um?
Well, that was leftover from the last meeting, I believe.
Correct.
That we didn't get to. If the, I don't know, Josh could probably answer this better than anybody.
I was just gonna say, if you could, could, can you bang on the wall and holler at him and tell him to?
I'm here.
There he is.
Don't interrupt you.
Are we, you went, you still want the CPA?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we have to have some resolution. I know there's, uh, still discussion with Jamie, uh, and with us as a board. Um, but obviously, and, yeah, I've gotta have some resolve either way, that we can make decision on to get this resolved and caught back up.
On, okay, but is the question on hiring a CPA, or is the question on bank reconciliation and where, where it belongs?
Well, that one that I made's on there just for that. I don't know, um, if Jamie's adding anything in, where we, where we stand with that decision of statutory duties would be the only thing that would change that. I mean, if she's not taking that back, I'm still going to need that CPA's help to get that done.
Uh, Josh, during the audit, the, the auditor, that they would, you know, within a week or so, come in and, and help get that caught up, um, is, is that the type of CPA? Um, is, is that the type of CPA that you're, would that solve the problem, or are you talking something more long term?
Well, I was looking at somebody to do that um long term while I'm getting trained. I mean, the issue though, like I said, is I still have to get that training done. Um, Cindy's going to come in, I did reach out to her, so we will be meeting up next week to go through the AGs and get a little more explanation on those. Uh, like I said, I'm, I'm not as, I'm not the most intelligent person, but I'm not um unable to learn this. It's just with the changeover, it was basically just kind of put in there, so. So I, um, I know Jamie had brought up the duties as well, because they look at it, that's really just getting in that momentum of understanding it. I come from a corporate background and hear finances work a lot different than they do in the corporate world. I guess, like with the rea-, you know, just we're always, we're always taking in funds and basically capturing funds this year to spend next year. And just understanding where all of that goes, so that's, that's what the auditor, I know they came in and helped us close out the year and get ready for the audit. Um, but that was kind of more audit focused for me, so there was a lot to learn with um the AGs that were sent over and different things that I had to do, so it's just. Like I said, we want to get this resolved, it's almost to June. Um, so be a decision of the board, I would, I would leave that on there pending any other change if that moves over or something that would then be up to Jamie. Um, I know she had talked about possibly even having them correct those, even if it was going to come back to her, so. Lot in the air on that, but I would, I, yeah, if we're not moving those duties, I would definitely still want somebody to come in and assist and oversee that with me. So I, I know that it's correct.
So that, and that topic's going to be for Monday also, um, the motion that we made from Tuesday night to, to get the opinion from the attorney and we got one, so. Did they automatically just come back to me? Do we need to take action under this topic for that, or is that all going to be decided Monday?
Well, did, did everyone get the, the email that I sent uh regarding the um, the statutory duties of the clerk? That's what it, it states in there is his responsibilities. I read what the attorney said, um, I'm not, I'm not sure that he, he put in there what the, what the treasurer's duties are, and they're, it's a pretty short list. Uh, he didn't include what the clerk duties are, and I just, um, my, my concern is if, under, under statute, if the, if the clerk is responsible. Those duties, uh, I guess, I guess it's up to him, if he's willing to have somebody else do something that he's responsible for. Uh, that's, that's up to him, but I was thinking if, if you've made arrangements to have the, you know, Cindy come in and, and get things caught up here next week. Uh, then at least we're on, you know, we're, we're back on solid ground and she can give you some, you know, some training on, on how to do that and how it all works. Uh, maybe we could take up the issue of hiring a CPA a, a little, a little later uh on here. Um, because I'm not sure it's not a good idea to have a CPA, I, we, we talked about this, you know, last year, that was some talk about that, and it kind of got shot down, but uh. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having CPA, but I think it, it probably should be something that we, um, you know. Have some consideration on, uh, we had a CPA firm that we worked with a little bit last year, if we wanted to have a CPA, I guess we could contact them again, the white. They'll group and see if they'd be willing to come back in and work with us. Um, you know, we do have some options there, I just, if, if, if you've already made arrangements with Cindy to come in and get, get things squared away.
Uh, she's coming in to go over those, the adjusted journal entries that we had. Not much of you guys to ask for, there were fifty, one of them, so she wants to go through and make sure um that I had those entered correctly. So that's what our time is going to be devoted to next week that we're sitting down and um. Basically assisting Mitch as well with making sure we have any additional narrative um that was requested there with that AG report that we had. Okay. So that's why I said, we're working on a lot of things, Bill, and that's just really what's frustrating for me is as time ticks on, it's, it's something I've ran at and I just haven't grasped overnight. So I know down the road, there's going to need to be things there, um, and Jamie did propose that option. I mean, if she wanted to take those and I'm checking them, I'm still, like I said, going to have to get trained to go through. Um, but on that end, I'm looking at the um, bank sheet and verifying it um to Jamie's balance. Where right now I'm the one trying to do that balance, but I don't see the funds, so like I said, it's like, where's Waldo for me, which is really the hard part. I don't, everything I do in this office, that is, that is just like totally different. Everything else I do, I'm checking the checks, I'm the second signer on the checks, I sign the contracts, I hold all of the information. So that's kind of where this one's a little backwards, and that's what we got out of it, is she used to balance them. And then they would be checked off here, much like everything else I do, I'm more of the check. And that one was kind of clearly outlined where she would do those and bring them back. So it's just, we're trying to find an option that works for everybody. Um, obviously to get that back, we don't want to spend a ton of money, there's already going to be some money on training for me and um the other new officials. And we want to do it in a timely manner, so we're caught up. And that's really it, as finances are a huge issue for our township, um, we have a lot going on and. Just the time we spent on the audit report, I mean, I'm not saying down the road that, I know Cindy had talked with us about the option of having that monthly person. Um, and that that would um increase or reduce the amount of time on our audit, like having a monthly balance. If we had someone come in and take those books and do that triple check, because that counts as an audit check. So I mean, there are lots of different ways we could approach that to still have that third check that, again, we may be able to do that monthly bill, and then we would save money and we wouldn't be sitting there. For as long on the end of the year audit, and that may be the way to correct some of the AGs, because those would be caught monthly. So when the audit came, all of that would have been in month booking instead of waiting, you know, twelve months to look and see if we did everything correctly.
I like the idea.
Sure.
Okay, so we're leaving it on. We're leaving on recommendation for hiring CPA, or this is becoming the conversation about bank reconciliation, or it's a combination of both?
Well, that's where me and Jamie were just trying to get clarification, if um, she can take that back, we can start moving and getting that caught up and then still. Um, basically change that out, like I was saying, we could just have that checks and balances, so we have that person balancing it, which gives us a monthly closeout. So we'll have twelve closeouts per year versus that one.
Okay, and back to um.
So I know, I know you're trying to clarify, Anne, but we're a little confused too, because we just.
Right, well, that's why we're.
Consensus from the board.
That's what we're doing, what we're doing, um, and we had a motion on Tuesday um to seek legal counsel. We sought legal counsel and he responded, and then as Bill indicated, Bill added to that, so. I think Bill's question.
I think we need to have whatever we, oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, Bill's question was to the board members, did everybody get that email um that Bill sent out?
Yes.
Yes, I got, I got it, I still have questions, so it might be a good idea to have Tim on to answer the questions. Because whatever we do, I want to make sure it meets statute, like because everybody does, but also it gets done on time correctly. That's the ultimate goal.
Okay.
Sounds to me like it's two separate issues, so either, we need to either add, add an item for uh, for, for the reconciliation. And probably put it before the CPA or add the reconciliation to that line item, so that both of those things are encompassed in the, in the conversation.
Right, that's, I guess, what I was trying to get clarification on, Jeremy, because we.
I, I know, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So are we, so um, I guess. Because to me, um, the discussion on the reconciliation of the bank statements, depending on conversation with Mr. Freel and the direction. Um, depending on the direction, I guess, that we go will then warrant um hiring a, um, the services of a CPA in regard to it.
Well, it sounds to me like they, it sounds to me like they want the CPA irregardless.
Okay, so then, so then we then are adding, so, okay, so um, I guess I would say that. Under micromanagement issue, um, we would then add, so we're going to renumber the rest, my thought would be anyways, I don't know what yours is, but mine would be that we do ba- um. Bank, is it, was it bank reconciliation, bank statement, what, what's the proper thing, Jamie or Josh, bank?
Bank reconciliation.
Bank recs, reconciliations, or bank statements reconciliations?
Bank state reconciliations.
Bank statement. Reconciliations. Okay, and then recommendation, and then recommendation for hiring a CPA after that?
Yeah, so Josh can get the training that he needs.
Okay. Okay. Between four and five. All right, um, then next we go to Chamber of Commerce, Fourth of July parade request. Pretty straightforward.
Is all their paperwork in order, Mr. Mitchell?
Ooh, ready.
I think the main thing is they changed the time, I guess, kind of, it had been later in the day for years, but then the last couple of years it was ten or eleven AM, and now they're switching it again. I guess based on the fact that it's on a Sunday, Tammy said, and they're thinking about people in church, but not sure about that, but anyways, twelve thirty is the start time.
I was considerate.
Okay. No, all right, so we're set with that. Um, the next one is proposed board protocol change agenda.
Yes, um, what I'm going to ask is that uh. This be added to a future work session that we talk about the agenda itself and just things like uh, if you go right to the top of our agenda, we put. It says agenda additions, it should say agenda approval. And there, there's some other things that uh the attorney and I talked about that would uh possibly streamline some of this agenda. So we'd like to, I'd like put on a work session to talk about, and then based on that, with that discussion, we may put something on as a uh, an action. I have to change your board protocol packet, or your board protocol for the agenda itself.
Okay. All right, so it's basically going to be some just information and then um.
No, no.
Discussing it.
Strictly to add you to add it to the next uh work. Because if you look at the work session, what we're supposed to be doing in work sessions, uh, that would be a topic that would be under that kind of discussion.
Well, I, I think if you look at the, at the current protocol for the agenda, it says meeting agenda, approval and additions. So if we were following what our protocol is, it would answer your question. On that issue anyway.
Right, Mitch wants to put it on a work session so we can talk about changing it, I think.
That and, and some other change, possible changes to the agenda, so how, how.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yep. Yep, I, I know Mr. Freel had indicated that he had some ideas. Okay, um, the next is the website content discussion review. I mean, I know there's nothing in the packet, but is that relative to what um Tammy sent out in regard to the demo area, or not demo, but uh.
What they've got done so far.
Uh, basically revises, revises saying that the website is complete in their, from, from their perspective. That their, their deliverables are complete and they're ready to hand it over and make the site live. Um, so we, so I was talking to Tammy, we sent that link out to the board members so that everyone can kind of poke through there and take a look at it. The, the discussion to, for this is, A, if everyone's happy with it, we need to set a go-live date, and so we can move forward on that. And B, the uh, the website, the framework is complete, but there is little to no content in there. So it was not part of the contract with revised for them to migrate the content from our current website to the new website. No documents, no, you know, they've got a couple of things in there for placeholders, just so that, you know, they can see that things were working in testing purposes. But for all intents and purposes, we have to decide if we want to pay them a little bit extra to, you know, based on their rates of, I think it's two or three dollars per document for the documents on demand stuff. Um, I don't know how much it is for all the, all the, all the page content, but do we want to pay them to have that content migrated? Or do we want to try and uh, and heap that giant task upon township personnel?
Do we have a cost to that, Jeremy?
I'm sorry?
Did we get, were they, did they give us a cost of what it would be to do that?
They alluded to uh, for the, for the documents on demand portion, they were going to charge a flat rate per document of two or three dollars per document, but they did not tell me how much the content on the regular webpages would cost. So no, I do not know, I don't even know if the board wanted to entertain that idea, but uh in discussions with Tammy. Um, you know, it just, it just seems like if we try to heap that task onto township personnel, it's going to take a while, because they have other things they have to be doing. And it's, you know, I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to have us, you know, in the interim between cutting off the old website and having the new website complete to where we want it with content. You know, I don't want that gap to be any larger than it needs to be.
And Jeremy, you know, the content of what we have now is stale, right, at best, right? So I wouldn't suggest trying to come, I wouldn't suggest trying to port that content particularly like as it is, like pick it up, move it and plant again. Um, but I mean, s- some of this stuff should be reviewed, I mean, I think there's even some stuff in there that isn't even accurate or should be updated. You know, it's kind of like, there was supposed to have been a review level at, at the department level. While the building was going on, that looks like that action item never got done from what I'm hearing here, so we're stuck now at the last minute. Scrambling to try to put content together that somebody outside the township should not be trying to write blindly.
Fair enough, I can, I could see where we might be able to split it up a little bit, because I think the documents on demand stuff would probably migrate over relatively simply, but you're absolutely correct on the rest of the content. It should be reviewed and refreshed.
The documents on demand now is, so we're not using the same uh, the same utility to manage the documents?
We're talking about that, one of the problems with, with the documents on demand is that the staff that have to utilize that service are required to add specialized coding to the, to the front of file names in order for the things to show up in the right place. And it seems like, you know, it seems like a very cumbersome system, like come on, really, you can't just drag and drop, it's, it's the drag and drop age. It's what's that?
It's onerous.
Yes, very much so, and, and they have an alternative uh document uh storage and viewing uh module, if you will. And one of the things that I wanted to, that I was trying to do before they were ready to cut it over was look into that, you know, there, there was that one in the uh, the module to help Josh with the meeting minutes and the agendas and all that stuff. And we didn't actually get a chance to look at those yet, I would still like to look at the alternative for the documents on demand, and if we do decide to migrate to that, then we'd have to have all those documents dumped over.
Uh, Jeremy, I'd like to say that it's really unfortunate to hear that point, you know, after uh, I think that system was converted over maybe two or three years ago. So this is not the old original system. Um, you know, that was, that was a decision made somewhat in a bubble, it, nobody that, you know, I know, well, I, I don't know whoever reviewed it. But it was apparently decided that we would go to that new system. To hear that it's now onerous is kind of like, well, who reviewed this, you know, how did we sign up for this? It wasn't something I knew was going to be onerous and we agreed to it, so if you were involved and you can see that, that would be great if you could find out whether this new system that they're offering is. You know, it's a, it's going to be easier to manage. Um, and as far as the cost per document goes, you know, I don't, I don't know what to say on that, that's. That was, yeah, that's unfortunate that that wasn't even anticipated during the, I, I didn't know that was part of the scope, frankly, I thought we were just going to plug in documents on demand.
They are, that's, that, that is the current scope, you're absolutely correct, they are going to plug in the documents on demand. The problem is, is that the documents on demand process is miserable at best.
Yeah, yeah, but I didn't know that was a problem until just now, this is the first, I think, the board's heard about it.
Oh, really? I thought I tooted that horn plenty of times, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, but I hadn't heard that before, so, you know, it, because if you had, then it would have been part of the, the quote to fix it, to replace it, but it wasn't, so. So I, that's why I'm saying, huh, that's unfortunate, but at least we're, we're getting this fixed.
Well, we're at least going to look at some alternatives, I think we should, uh, the module that they're talking about is uh built into the package, if I remember correctly, so it's not going to be an additional fee. It's just going to be getting the documents from, from, from one platform to. So it's not going to be an additional fee. It's just gonna be getting the documents from 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 one platform to the other. But, you know, I like I said, I'd like to look at it. I'd like to poke at it. I'd like to see what Tammy's thoughts are with some of the other directors in the office are. You know, see what they're, you know, if it if it is going to be a better system, then we should definitely look at it. And if it turns out that it's gonna be terrible or just as bad as the documents on demand with the prefixing special codes for file names in the twenty-first century, yeah, that's then we'll just keep it the way it is, but yeah. So that's other than that, they're they're, you know, revised is ready to go live. I think that they'd like to do a public reveal. I don't know if they want to do it at this board meeting or or not, but, you know, when I was speaking with them, they did mention that they do like to do public reveals. And I haven't heard if they're gonna be on the meeting on Monday or not. Um, but I just wanted to pre, you know, kind of get to get the ball rolling, get the link out to everyone so we could review it, look at the site. Do you guys everyone happy with the menu structure? Do you see anything that is just absolutely not gonna work? And why, et cetera, et cetera, so on and so forth? What are your thoughts, fellow board members?
I like it.
I haven't had a chance. I was gonna say, I'm sorry, Jamie, if I can butt in here real quick, I haven't had a chance to look at this yet. And it seems like if we make a decision now to do the public reveal before Monday. I don't know, I I mean, if there isn't content, we're talking about a lot of items here that aren't complete yet.
I know.
Want to be, yeah, I don't think I'd want to be doing a public reveal on something that's really just half baked at this point. Another board meeting.
And I'll tell you, Mr. Cummings. Sorry, let me let me hop right in here real fast. Mr. Cummings, to that point, they were trying to get Kent to get Tammy to cut our DNS this week. They were in the process of telling her to cut DNS and I put the kibosh on it immediately. So I was I was kind of irritated that they were pressuring her to do that without even letting the board see it first, but that's what they were, I guess that's what they're saying their process was, so. Just so you know.
Well, that's, well, no, they're they're pushing through, but you know, they're ultimately gonna get paid when it's done. They don't want to drag it out, so.
Fair enough.
Appreciate the point, but but yeah, alright, buddy, I'm sorry, Jamie, I cut you off.
You like it, Jamie? You like it? Is it pretty?
It is very pretty and I think it's very streamlined. It looks really nice. I can't wait till it's done and it does need a some of the material I kind of was looking at some of my stuff and it's still relative, but like phone numbers and things like that. Of course, we're gonna have to go through and change that, but yes, I think it looks really nice.
Oh, yeah, it's I was pretty excited with it too.
Well, okay, but now you can tell me what a DNS though.
DNS stands for domain domain name service or domain name server, depending on who you're talking to. Basically, when you type google.com into your web into your web browser, because you want to go see the Google page. The internet doesn't work by google.com. The internet uses a DNS translator, if you will, to translate google.com into the into the numbers that form the IP address of where that server is located. So when we cut DNS, that means that osco to township MI.gov is going, currently it's pointing to the hosting package over at Liquid Web. And when we cut DNS, that means that they're gonna change where that domain name points to the new hosting package that hosts our new website. And when they do that, the new site is absolutely live in the state that it is in right now.
Oh, yeah, we don't want that.
That's
Exactly. Thank you.
Well, I will say I went
I'm just glad you two are on board, because it's all above me.
I did turn on there, I clicked the link and and looked at it, played around with it. I I I I don't know about all the technical stuff, but it's real pretty.
It is, well, that's one of the
It's beautiful face lift, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
So it sounds like some discussion for Monday. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of things that we need to make a decision moving forward on. You know, it's kind of our our call as the board. And we need to make sure that the people that are making the website understand that we will decide the timeframe.
Yep, back off, busters.
Just keep in mind, this is one of the last blocks. We don't want to, we don't want to blow them off too long.
No, for sure not.
But we we do want to have it right, uh, go with that.
Right, Dan's right, stand back from the button.
Yeah. You know, we've been been tooting this for a while and, you know, I mean, we definitely want to go live if we're not comfortable with the content there. Cause there's, you know, there's just one or two people that, you know, criticize things that are done, so I'm just guessing. Um, that if we go live and we have, you know, I mean, not saying that even if we don't correct some things, that somebody else isn't gonna find mistakes or have a better approach, but we definitely need to clean up anything that, you know, is obvious, I guess, um, would be my thought. I mean, I don't know any of the technical stuff, so thank you, Jeremy and Tim in regard to that.
Problem.
I have to ask Jeremy how to blow my screen back up after I screw it up, so, um, yeah, not good when it comes to computer. Okay, so next on, these are my two, I had zoning board of appeals appointment and planning commission appointment. Um, we have, uh, and then actually Mitch provided information in regard to our protocol book of which we do talk about in application form being submitted. I I do recall reading that in the protocol book. There wasn't an application done, I guess I should have on available. I knew that Ryan was working on stuff, um, but I didn't, uh, I mean, it's completely up to the board if they would like to format that application process more formally um, and and hold off on discussing these topics for Monday night. I'm fine with that.
I would like to, I would like to move forward. You have you have three applicants for the planning commission. We have an open seat on the planning commission. Uh, the our first meeting in June, we have our election of officers. I I think it would be advantageous to, uh, you know, move forward with that appointment with somebody so that we can, you know, fill that vacancy and then when we have our 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 election of officers, we have a full board to choose from. I I think that would be, I I would prefer to see that than to wait for, you know, some formal application form to be drafted and printed out.
Right, well, I I know, like, like Mitch said, and actually I believe that Ryan, when he emailed, I believe, right, Mitch, Ryan had emailed us like a month or so. It might have been even when we started talking about the misappointment for John Minor um, that Ryan had emailed me that they had they during the RRC process, I think, had started working on a module or something in regard to an application process. Wasn't that how it came out?
Development of an application, yeah.
Right, right, so and it does identify it in the protocol manual. Um, so I definitely do not want to move forward in a direction and make any appointment and then somebody come back and indicate we didn't follow our protocol manual and have an issue with any of these people, so. I am, you know.
I agree.
Yeah, so, um.
Well, is Ryan ready? Are they ready to present that application so we can have it ready at the next meeting?
I I'd have to look back at the email that he sent. I know he he sent a draft document, but I don't know if it's been. I don't know if it's ready or not, I guess. But, I mean, we we could, you know, I'm I'm sure it it looked like it was, you know, started, I guess we could get it tweaked and bring it back for the first week, first meeting in June, which I know doesn't work in regard to the planning commission's appointment of officers and stuff. I mean, can that be delayed? I guess, Bill, until the second, till the July meeting. I know it's a target for June, but
That's in our bylaws, it has to be June.
Okay.
I I just, I I don't know how much more, the the each applicant has provided a a good deal of information in their resumes. I I don't know how much more we would need, quite frankly. I mean, just to have it in a different format, is that, I mean, I I don't.
Right, well, it's an app, yeah, I mean, it does identify, you know, we missed the the cut and paste from the from the protocol, it does indicate.
Right, we probably should stick to protocol. We don't want to start picking and choosing.
But up to the board. So I can find that email from Ryan and send that out to the I'll I'll look for that email from Ryan, I guess, but I mean, do we want to remove it for now then, or?
I would say yes, we had a uphold the protocols.
I think it, I guess, on a side mode note, I would say I'm extremely happy that we have three very qualified people that are interested in being on the planning commission and one very qualified person that's interested on being on the zoning board of appeals, in my opinion. Um, all four, um, are are bring a lot to the table, so I think that's a really good sign for our community, so. Hey, so
Awesome.
So I will jump on that application process, alright, and I mean, I did, it does actually say persons wishing to consider for appointment or reappointment will submit the superintendent's office an application on a form provided by that office. So it sounds like the forms are supposed to be in the office. So it'll be the planning commission, you know, it'd be Nicole, but so are, do you want to remove it? I mean, I know you don't want to, Bill, I I heard that, but the rest of the board?
Sorry, I'm muting. I I I think as we, and and I would love to fill these things, don't get me wrong, but as we're sticking to statutes and board protocol, I think we need to, we need to follow it.
Okay, I will, um, I think I heard Tim kind of say the same thing. Jamie said it. Um, so I will jump on, I mean, Jeremy, Josh, are you?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to challenge the protocol, I guess. The only, the only thing we could do besides that is, um, I guess if we didn't have the acceptance letter, would that qualify us to review those in a resume form?
I don't understand that, no.
We created the policy, but the document hasn't been created, so I mean, if we move forward with those on Monday, because that document's not created. Does that put us in a position where we're violating that protocol manual or once that document is presented and installed, we have to use it going forward?
There's
Just an idea.
There's an, there's an entire section after that that talks about that the board will evaluate each applicant on an objective basis on the following criteria, and then it lists seven different ones. And then it talks about under board action that after the application, there'd be a board interview period, a board evaluation and then decision and announcement. And that's all starts, uh, on page thirteen of the document, so it goes for almost the page, well, about a page and a half, so.
Right, I did review that. You are correct. Not that I doubted that you were, but yes. Okay, well, I guess I'm gonna make a, I will, um, I think we need to take it off, so, um, again, I will let the people know that reached out to me. Um, because when they had reached out to me, I had indicated we didn't have a formal application process at this time to give me their resume. And so they did what I asked them to do, so, um, I will tell them that we are developing an application and we'll do that extremely in a timely manner. So we will be
I'm encouraged at the response. I think that's your to your point earlier, I wanted to acknowledge what you said. It it's it's great that we've got people that are responding and we've got four applicants, that's awesome.
Yeah. And I I definitely don't want anybody to think that we're I I don't want anybody to be challenged, I guess, moving forward if we do something and let's point it out later, so, okay. Moving on then to number eleven, which would be part-time clerical for treasurer's office request for appropriations is the agenda title, I guess.
Need some help, do you?
Yeah, and it was approved last year and I sent the backup paperwork, because I know according to the board protocol, we have to have backup information for discussion. So I sent the minutes from the meeting back in July and also a a page out of the budget that shows that it was budgeted for twenty twenty and that it's not budgeted for this year, so it was, I'm sure it was just an oversight. We had a lot going on, so I can't move forward unless there's money there to is appropriated to go ahead and start that process. Now, that being said, whether anybody applies and wants to come back to work, that's another question, so.
Right, wow.
Good luck. I was down in Detroit this week and Buffalo Wild Wings is offering all over nine hundred dollar signing bonuses, just to get people
Oh, my God.
All the rest, all the restaurants, McDonald's, four fifty down there, it's just, it's crazy.
Yeah, I think somebody said there's a restaurant in Tawa, um, Augie's that's offering that right now in Tawas.
Man.
If you, if you commit to ninety days of employment, at least, you have to, after ninety days of employment, you get it, I think, or something like that. But, yeah.
It's crazy.
You you know, you know, I was in the trucking business, I was in the trucking business in my previous life here. And I saw something the other day, uh, a number of trucking companies are paying truck CDL truck drivers fourteen thousand dollars a week.
Oh, gosh.
Alright, we're all in the wrong business, let's go get our CDs.
Yeah, yeah. I've got a good driving record, let me get trained up on that.
You don't, yeah, I'm pretty sure you don't want me driving a semi.
Good way to see the country.
Yeah, yeah, my stepdad did it for years and he loved it, but um, okay, so does anybody need more information for Monday night in regard to that topic?
Not for me.
Okay, alright, then I just lost agenda, there we go, um, we have MTA dues subscription.
Yep, that one, did everybody get a chance to review in the packet?
Yeah.
Um, the big thing on there, the dues are due, but the reason I wanted to bring this up was they offer us that package for nineteen hundred dollars. And I was just looking at what we did for Nancy with border review and I know Bill had one and it looks like we spend more than that every year. So I was looking to get approval, shall I put that in there for us to have that premium package? So training would be paid for for all board members, township employees, as well as any volunteers um, for any of our boards or committees.
Oh, that's awesome.
We got a lot of new people this year and I feel like nineteen hundred dollars to let everybody, you know, our planners could go in and do their basic training and then just keep going, you know what I mean? As ambitious as they are, we could get all those programs and get people up to speed with new planning and zoning members, new board members.
I think we'd save money at that.
Yeah, that's that's what I was looking at just on your class there, Bill. I was like, just if all of us took that, we would have spent over nineteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so anybody need any additional information for Monday for that one? Okay. Um, we were moving the meter pit purchase that was thirteen, we're moving that up, so we already talked about that. Then, so then the last on other other, under other, sorry, is violation of flag code compliant, complaint, sorry. I see more on there.
Basically, I got a, I got a phone call from a gentleman asking me why the purchase and fly a flag that violates the US flag code. And he quoted this paragraph eight subsection T. It says, like, never be placed upon or upon any part of it nor attached to any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design or picture or drawing of any nature. And I said, well, in itself, i- if I interpreted his discussion with me, I think he's in his, in his feeling is that the design of that blow the US egg should not be flown, uh, because it violates this section of the code. Uh, is there, is there true penalties for violating the US flag code? That is that those got removed, uh, some time ago, and I actually, uh, this Supreme Court case. But, and you know, I I can't answer for the board, uh, but I was hoping that maybe you helped me to respond collectively to that complaint, uh, concern and then I can answer him back.
So is his complaint with the with the the flag with the blue stripe on it or with the fact that there's another flag on the same pole?
No, it's the fact that that, uh, flag and maybe I shouldn't say flag, but that the the image that is below the US flag at this time. Um, and maybe I shouldn't say flag, but the, the, the image that is below the US flag at this time. Um, in his mind, that flag, uh, shouldn't be flown in a, on a government building or government property because it violates this paragraph and subsection of the US flag.
Okay, so since it looks like an American flag, but it's actually not an American flag.
Hi, boy, I don't, that's a, you're getting into legal wortage. I don't know if I can answer that.
I'm just trying to find, I'm just, I'm just trying to find out if the guy is upset about the flag itself or the fact that we're flying any flag below the flag on the, on the.
No, he's, he's not about that particular.
That particular flag.
Mm-hmm, and then in his mind, it violates this section because it, it's an alteration of the original, uh, of the flag above it. Under this. Part of the.
Boy, howdy. Is there any, uh, do we have any precedent of, uh, like federal offices flying, uh, flags with the red or white or, or blue stripe on it, supporting the police and fire departments?
I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you.
I don't, I don't know either. I'm just kind of tossing out, you know, I mean, short of a legal opinion on that, I'm not sure. I'm not qualified to make that determination.
And, and like you say, there's no, if, even if you did violate the code, uh, there's no penalty for it of any kind.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
I know.
What he's highlighting, Jeremy, is what we point out a lot of times every day. You go into your local Walmart and see that stand coming up around Memorial Day, Fourth of July. Uh, necklaces, t-shirts, anything printed, the entire US flag's supposed to be printed on it. It was never supposed to be on underwear, towels, shorts, jeans, yada, yada, yada.
Right, but we're talking about the difference between a private entity selling merchandise and a, and a government facility flying a flag that may be against code.
Right, which that, that code that he's citing just says that you should not make it. So that would be more to a manufacturer violation as far as what we're required to do. We are flying it according to the US flag. Just to clarify that for you.
Oof.
I don't know who that is.
Mr. Schultz, Mr. Schultz has his mic on.
I, I'm just asking that you help me collectively be able to.
Man, I'm, I'm sorry, Mitch. Me personally, I, I don't, I don't know what to say on that. I mean, I see the guy's point, you know, but. I, ah, ah.
I mean, I may answer this question to him and maybe nothing further, or maybe this gentleman will, uh, want to discuss it even more.
Is there something for Tim Freel?
Yeah, I don't know. That's what I was just thinking.
I don't know. Well, I don't know.
I mean, we could get it over to Tim for clarification.
I think I asked him and he was.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds pretty clear from what, you know, from what the, from what you read there that it, that, I mean, technically the flag probably wasn't supposed to be made, but since they don't really. Enforce it, then companies can just kind of do whatever they want. I guess it's going to be a, kind of a determination of are we going to allow it or not? Is prob- probably what it's going to boil down to. Sounds like an "and" question.
The US flag goes.
Funny, funny.
The supervisor.
That's right.
Yeah.
Hot seat.
Yeah. Well, would you like me to look into something or what?
I, I, the only thing that I would say, I mean, if, 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 if I was the dictator, I would ask Mr. Freel and say, is the guy right about the flag? If he is, maybe the board should consider taking it down. If he's not, then we leave it there. I'm not trying to upset any citizens either way. I know the police like having it up there because it shows support for them. I, this, this is just one of those things where you just, you know, there's the circle on the wall. Go bash your head on it.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I think.
Yeah, we do it just kind of highlight. Well, go ahead then.
Oh, I just thought he already maybe ran something by Tim and Tim.
Yeah, and we talked about it and he said, uh. That it, we could bring the complaint to the board or he could talk about it at public comment. And that, uh, let's see. Yeah, we, we talked about potential First Amendment issues and is an establishment clause, uh, then the, I think the. Case was like US versus Ikeman, um. So it's, he's like, I didn't want to get super deep into it, um, unless you really need me to get much more.
What, let me offer, let me, uh, see if we can't find an, uh, find, uh, some middle ground. Uh, my, uh, one of my, my, uh. Extended family is, is a sheriff's deputy. And he has the Thin Blue Line emblem that is actually from that organization where it's black on the top, the thin blue line and black on the bottom with no representation of an American flag. Perhaps we should swap the flag out so that we can continue to support the police with the Thin Blue Line logo, but we don't have the American flag in the background, thus violating. The, you know, or.
I think it actually has three stripes on it. It has a green and a blue and a red.
Some of the newer ones might have that encompass all of them, but I, but the, uh, but the Thin Blue Line logo is that organizations. And then they're kind of expanding on it because now there's the, the fire department one and all of those other ones. So. If we could get one that doesn't have the American flag in the background on it, but still shows the support with the thin blue and red lines. Would that be a compromise?
It, it may, yeah.
Well, perhaps.
Like a reasonable solution.
Yeah, rather than, uh, trying to push it and do attorney stuff and whatnot, if, uh, if you could, I mean, I, I, I would think that that would satiate the gentleman's, uh, concerns. And, uh, you know, I know that we, uh, approved, what was it, Josh, like twenty-five bucks for the flag or something?
Probably like seven or eight bucks.
Oh, well.
Yeah, we're just trying to find, because that one's like a commemorative. It's police, fire, first responders and our military. And I mean, really, that's. The heartbeat of our town. We're, we're, uh. After the Air Force Base, we have retirees that have served our country. I mean, we go out to that memorial park. So I would find something. To replace that, but just not having the American flag is what you're looking for, Joe.
Yeah, that's the, the little pins that we, uh, that he has on his lapels.
Memorial flag without the US flag background.
Yeah, it's, if it doesn't.
That might work well.
Okay, sounds like a good solution. Okay, and then, um, I think there was, uh, one other thing that, uh, Mitch, you had emailed in regard to a request to use FERTA for, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, uh, what do you call it? Corn?
A cornhole, uh, and we got that late today. Uh, so the question really is, do you want to add to the event? Uh, do you want? Do, do you want my office to just deal with this? Uh, you know, and we, we seem to get these questions that are, you know. Is it a full-blown event? Is it something we could handle internally and, and just report out? Uh, and then the question of the timing, I mean, the timing is, you know, we're talking literally a week and. So, uh, all I'm asking from you is, uh, in guidance as far as, do you want to tackle this issue or do you, I don't want to say punt, but do you want to punt? This to, to our office and the, of it accordingly and.
I don't have a problem with you guys doing it. We have, we have standard protocol for renting with the Warrior Pavilion and for requirements for insurance and different things like that. I don't know what this, what that is calling for, but we already do that. With that, for input, like for Warrior Pavilion, the rentals and then the refunds and those type of things. I would be comfortable with you and Tammy, um, making sure that all the pieces are covered with that.
They're wanting to use it for, uh, FERTA field for free because they're, um, they're saying it's a free event. Although then they talk about some kind of prize pool as well, so. Um.
And the placement of a porta potty and.
Right, no, yeah, they, they would rent a porta potty, um, but then, uh. Um, no, uh, no concessions or anything like that. I mean, except for, I'm sure if somebody brought stuff, but.
Right.
Their own coolers or whatever, but they're not setting up and selling stuff, but, but providing a bathroom, um. Which I think I saw this posted on Facebook, which is much better than the one other idea I saw, um, other than a porta potty. So anyways. I, I guess I won't go farther, but, um, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's great, you know, like, again, we had, um, the Forest Service, um, you know, playing football there the other day. I mean, that's different than, you know, I think they all just gathered together and played and, you know, and it's a pickup game. This would be where somebody's advertising tournament. You know, um, which somewhat similar to, I guess, what, or not somewhat exactly similar to the class of twenty twenty-one fundraiser that we, uh, um, approved. You know, just a couple of weeks ago or a month ago, um, for the use of the field. Because it was a donation, um, you know, there wasn't a fee to play. They weren't making money on it. It was all to just kind of donate, you know, bring people together, donate to be a fundraiser, so. I don't, this sounds kind of like a, just a community gathering as well, but.
Didn't just do it.
Huh?
At least they asked and didn't just do it.
Right, I mean, the concern would be is if that, if we've reserved it, even if we've rented it, which we don't very often rent FERTA anyway, anyways. But if we've rented it to like, you know, Blue Ribbon or another vendor for something and then somebody else organizes something without asking, then obviously we have a conflict. You know, so. So it's a good thing they asked, I guess, but, because I don't know when the next event is for the, um, fresh air market. Is that like the first weekend in June or something? So there's not a conflict with that one, right? But.
No, it'd be, oh, Jan Roberts.
Yeah, Jan Roberts thing.
No, but. Uh, uh, if there's that real strong feeling to put it on the agenda, then, then my office will just take care of it.
Mark, Matt, we don't need to manage that.
Yep.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Oh, no, it sounds like, yeah.
I don't know about it.
Yeah.
Well, I would say as long as there isn't a, an admission fee being charged. And it's not a commercial enterprise, uh, you, you, you said it, Ann, earlier that, you know. Uh, community members can show up at the field and throw the football around or play cornhole or, you know, things like that, that, you know, it's not a problem. Uh, it's when we have organized events where an admission is charged. And, uh, then, then there's certain liability, then it falls on the township as relates to, uh, you know, people. Being on the site. So that's a whole different situation than just something where they get together, community members and, and play a game there.
But, but if there's a tournament where you have to have a, a fee to enter.
That's a different situation then, yes.
And, and is that something you want to, again, is that some of the board you want to tackle and, and?
Well, the only thing we'd have to tackle for something like that, it's not, not difficult. I, I'm not saying we wouldn't want to do that. Uh, but in those cases, then they would have to submit, you know, proof of insurance. Uh, the board have to decide, you know, if we wanted to charge them a fee, if it's for a fundraising for a, you know, a, a benefit of some sort, then. You know, we could waive the fee. We, like Dan said earlier, we don't normally charge a huge fee for you, for top field. Uh, but we do require insurance and, and those kinds of things. And, uh, so if it is something where there's a, a fee involved. Then that's a different situation than if there's no fee and people are just showing up, playing a game. I think, in my opinion, anyway.
All right, well, I guess, um, Mitch, I think what I'm hearing is that, you know, we'd like you to look in, you know, you to deal with it. If it becomes something where they're going to start advertising and charging, then it, then, then it's involving, it's evolving into a different animal, I guess.
Well, we, we do, we do know from the email that, uh, their intent is to.
Right.
Have a, a pay to get into a, a tournament.
But they, they use all that money for prize money. I don't think they keep any of it.
Right.
Yeah.
And like I said, I think the only thing that would be required is the, I think they would need to have a, a show of proof of insurance if they want to have an organized event like that.
Yeah.
With the township named as a. Okay, all right, we'll deal with it then, uh, in-house. Okay.
All right, well, I think that covers our, um. Packet, correct? So, um, I just want to go over briefly. We have consider need for follow-up additional information. I'm just going to summarize the notes. I, I guess if somebody else has something else, please let me know. Um, we had, um, a couple corrections in, in the May tenth and eighteenth. Uh, meeting minutes, so those will get done and, um, emailed out and posted, um. Uh, we had a question on IT, right? There was three invoices. We'll get some clarification from Tammy on those. On Monday and be able to report back on, uh. Payment on those. Um, we talked about the fireworks and, but I don't think anything, um, needs to be changed with the agenda or additional information, I guess. It was my notes. Um. Twenty, resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, we need to change the location, um, of the meeting. Because it, it's actually Zoom, not at the library. We're going to need to make that correction and get that back in the packet. Um, we are going to amend the agenda, um, in a couple spots. Uh, we're moving numbers, what was number seven meter pit? Oh, I'm sorry, what was number thirteen under other to number seven meter pit, um, purchase request? We are going to add the Skiel Avenue. Was that Skiel Avenue LOI? Was that it? Oh, Bill, I think your grand, your family arrived, right? Sorry. Yeah. We'll wrap this up. Yeah, have her say hi. Aw, there she is.
Hi.
Hi. We'll hurry up, sorry. You got to get to your grandpa. Your grandpa's got to get to you. Okay, so Skiel Avenue LOI is going to get added to the agenda, right? Um, we also have bank statement reconciliation that we're going to add to the agenda. That is going to be right after, um. Uh, the micro management number four. Under other, so after micro management and before recommendation for hiring CPA.
And then renumber accordingly.
Yeah, and then renumber accordingly, yep, um. Todd was going to revise his MOU, um, with the dates that were suggested. And we are going to be removing, um, numbers nine and ten from under other, which were the appointments. Um, and I will jump on, um, getting back with, uh, well, I don't know about Ryan, but getting that email from, um, that Ryan sent with the application, um, that we have to format for that process. Was there something else I missed or anything else?
No, you, you did say you were going to add the skill.
Yeah, the Skiel Avenue LOI. That was when your granddaughter arrived.
Yeah. Yeah, I missed that, thanks.
Yes, we were. And Todd was gonna, I guess if you could just verify, Mitch, I think Todd's back off the phone now, but, or off the, uh, meeting. If you could just maybe shoot Todd an email to remind him. Um, to get that Skiel Avenue information to us.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Did I miss anything? Okay, all right, um, anybody want to add anything else there under that section before we go to public comment?
Yeah, would this be the, uh, well, I guess, I'll, I'll toss it out there and then if it should go under board comment, that's fine.
We don't have board comment on this.
Oh, that's right, we're on the, okay, well then now's the time. Uh, the, one of the county commissioners hit me up and about the develop IOSCO meetings. And, uh, he said that there is a, a seat on the develop IOSCO meetings for OSCODA and we are not sending a representative. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention if it wasn't, uh, if you guys didn't know about it already and see if that was something that we needed to rectify or if we're just going to let it go.
Yeah, I think we probably need to look at. Yeah.
Yeah, the history on this is that, uh, yeah, exactly, that we, uh, Ann was actually the, the person representing us years ago. And then I stepped in and started, uh, representing us, but the, the group was highly dysfunctional. For, I'd say a couple of years and I basically petitioned the board that, um. um, do you want me to continue to go or not go, or what do you want me to do? And we, the, the agreement at the time um, was that, uh, I would basically look for them to, you know, kind of, if, if there was anything interesting, if there was anything that they were finally doing to, to move this into a more functional, uh, progress oriented, uh, organization that, you know, I could start attending, but, um, I haven't heard from them in a long time, so it looks like they've they, it, it, there's also been a bunch of names changed there. Um, I think the people that were there back when I was there or I'm, uh, attending are no longer, are no longer there now. So, anyway, uh, I guess it's up to you guys. You know, do you want to, uh, want attendance to resume? What do you feel on this?
Do, when's the last time?
Married to be the representative.
Into a couple of their meetings and it's also is very faint, uh.
Wow, that's ouch.
They asked me what I thought of it and I said I would dissolve it. You know, they've got like five or $6,000 to deal with and nobody really kind of seems to want it. And then when they got desperate, some people said they'll, they'll step up, but again, what do you do with $6,000?
Well, you could fix, fix a chip in a sidewalk somewhere, I think.
Since that last meeting, when they changed out, they canceled the next one. Cause I was going to those and we haven't had an invite since.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to bring it up. Sounds like, uh, if, you know, if they start moving and they want our participation, then they'll, uh, they'll come ask us for it. Perhaps in a more direct approach.
It, it looks like they might have already done that, Jeremy, but the, just with what, what, what just occurred, but more to the point of that they only have five or $6,000 to deal with. That they don't have a, a stream of income. So, you know, in one meeting, I could make a decision what to do with five or $6,000. I wouldn't need to keep recurring, uh, meetings to, to figure that out. Um, so, yeah, it just looked like it was just disorganized and not doing anything and it's, it slipped a long way from the days when Ann was attending. So, you know, back then, there was actually, uh, there was Develop by, uh, Develop by Oscar at that time hadn't purchased it, but there was a, uh, oh, what was the name of that?
It was, um, well, it, yeah, it, um, I can't remember what we called it, Tim, but it was, um, it was actually, it was facilitated to, facilitated through MSU extension as well. There was a staff member there. And I'm drawing a blank on his name, but bottom line, I mean, Develop by Oscar was a grassroots effort, um, to try to take an aggressive role in economic development in the county because the group felt that the economic development, the EIC, it, it, in, in, I, in Iosco County was, um, lame. Um, and I'm, that, that would be a nice, that would be a nice word, lame. And, um, so that's why it was formed and, and it was actually, um, very, you know, it was, it, it did a lot more than the, than the counties for a long time, but then sadly enough, it did become more of a time burner than a, um, a, a good function. So anyways, um, yeah, I, I don't know what they're doing these days. I hate to speak, speak ill, but, um, I know it, it did start kind of getting a little defunct. And, um.
Got to a point where it just wasn't worth our.
Well, you know, it got to be where everybody's, you know, you got there and everybody was just basically going around the table, saying what they were doing in their community. And it's like, listen, I, I don't have time for, you know, like.
Right, yeah, send me an email.
Yeah, like I don't have time to drive and, and, and we would host it around and, you know, I don't have time to drive 35, 40, you know, 30 minutes to something to talk about what I'm doing and listen to whatever everybody else is doing. I mean, I, I mean, it just, uh, you know, um, but it did have a good, you know, did have a good run for a while, but I'm not sure where it's going now, so.
Yeah, and I'm glad you did. And Ann, I just remembered, it was called the, um, Iosco, was it Economic Expo or something like that?
Oh, yeah, yep.
That was the thing that, that we, we actually had the township there and Ann did a great job of representing the township at that point. And that was, it was, it was frustrating because that expo was then purchased by Develop by Oscar. And then for two years after that, it had, um, to say it, a declining enrollment was, is probably an understatement. I think one year I attended it and I think there might've been 50 people that attended that were not booth uh, holders. So it was just like it just lost, it lost all momentum. Um, then they lost their website, uh, their domain name, they lost, they tried to put that back together again with a new domain name. It was like, everything just seemed to be a, a problem, like they just fell apart, um, in every way, shape and form.
Right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's it. I could editorialize more, but.
Right, but it's 6:33 and we need to all, yeah, let's go. Yeah, and it's, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, um, Tim, but I just.
Oh, no, 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 you're right, absolutely right. It's correct. I mean, we've said enough, I think we all, my answer is I don't care to reattend. Um, if it's going to just be in this, in the condition that it's in, and I'm glad a couple of other people have sampled it. But, uh, I don't care for the taste of the water.
Right.
Has PFAS in it?
Smack stuff. All right, so can we move on to board, uh, public comment? I'm sorry. Or does anybody else have anything else? Public comment? We got a couple of public members here, so. Ready for that? Yes, no, maybe so, okay, all right. I believe you should be able to unmute yourself now, but. Oh, shoot, today, yeah, okay, everybody should be able to unmute themselves. So if you have, you're public and you have a comment, please, um, say your name and go from there. Somebody there, Brian?
Yeah, I'm here. Now, looking into things concerning closed session meetings, which I'm finding a lot as I do my research, so don't take down the documents on demand. But anyway, uh, for any per se LOIs, I'm glad you're putting them out in public. I'm sure that that policy will continue. We will not have any discussion of the sale of real property behind closed doors. I think you've cleaned that up. But I also noticed on these closed session, uh, you, you're to take minutes on those closed sessions, reading from uh, the complied laws, a separate set of minutes must be taken for closed sessions. I don't know if the board is fully aware of that, if Josh is aware of that. Uh, now you have to hold those minutes for a year. And these closed session minutes shall only be disclosed if required by a civil action. And that could take place. So I want to make sure our house is in order, so to speak, uh, even though obviously my opinion on things that I've been seeing going on is quite different from some board members. But I'm glad on these LOIs, I hope that we put out the company's name, what they proposed to do and obviously where at. Uh, concerning the four stories, uh, down by the beach, I'm sure Palmer's correct, uh, but I'd like some verification on that. When was that approved? Uh, did that have to be approved by the board? As far as going four stories? And when I say these words, I'm not against it, but I've been around this town. Uh, you don't want to surprise those folks down there and you might want to talk. You know, want to get out there and, uh, you know, have a walk and talk, uh, but that would be my suggestion. But anyway, have a good weekend. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Brian. All right, anybody else? Public. You should be able to unmute. Okay, go ahead, Greg.
Uh, this is Greg Schultz. Um, I guess a couple of comments, uh, I think the website, the new website looks awesome. Uh, obviously there's a lot of content that needs to be updated, um, pretty much all of the, uh, board memberships, um, except for the Osko Township Board, uh, have, have some errors in them, so something to make sure that gets done before you let it loose. Uh, as far as the documents on demand, um, you know, there are documents there going back to 2010. Uh, I'm sure there are several hundred, if not a thousand plus documents. Uh, so at, at three bucks a pop, you know, that could, that could add up. Um, you might want to consider not converting everything over and just leaving the old documents on demand and, and just adding a new one for the, uh, new documents to come out, so. Just my thoughts on that and, uh, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Greg. All right, anybody else? Public, I think that was the only two actually. Uh, there might be another phone number there, but anyways, they can, um, unmute themselves if they want to speak. So hearing none, I would, uh, we just, I, how, why can't I ever remember? Did I just adjourn or I need a motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn.
Okay. All right, thank you. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Woo, weekend, see ya.
You too.
Weekend, everybody.
Thanks.